Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome everyone to July 9 Village Board Meeting. First item on the agenda is our county legislator Joel Tyner.
Thank you sir, I have had not this evening. First thing is, I wanted to invite you all. Usually, this meeting, the Reinbeck Village Board meeting, happens after the committee day each month and after the full board meeting. So a little bit unusual because of the 4th of July, I can actually tell you what's going to be on the agenda. This Thursday is the monthly committee meeting, all the different six committees are meeting, and this coming Monday is the full board meeting of the legislature. So, I'm not gonna run through all the dozens of items, but just a few things you might be interested in. There was a man named Bob Sears from La Grange, former Republican County legislator. He and I were working strongly about a decade ago to try to keep item pricing in Dutchess County. So that if you go into the Stop &amp; Shop in Reinbeck or any of the supermarkets in the county, it's a law that, you know, you see the stickers, the prices marked on the items. Unfortunately, as far as I'm concerned, some people in the county legislature have been really working hard sadly over the last year to repeal this law. I thought that their efforts had been beaten back, so to speak, but I was sort of chagrined to see that is back on the agenda this Thursday. It's not maybe the most exciting or interesting issue on the planet, it's not like the world is gonna come to an end if this law is repealed, but if you care about senior citizens, if you care about consumer protections, and frankly if you care about jobs, because if you look at what UFCW, United Food and Commercial Workers, have advocated on, written about this in Massachusetts and Michigan and all over the country, supermarkets lay people off. When these item pricing laws are repealed, there's layoffs. We're still in the worst recession we've been in in the last 70 or 80 years, so I know you guys are doing great work here on the Reinbeck Village Board, that's your priority. It makes a big difference if anybody calls or emails or comes to speak out, it makes a huge difference if you. Now maybe you might disagree with me, no matter how you feel about the issue, feel free to come speak up, that's this Thursday, 4:45 PM, on the 6th floor of the county office building, okay? You can call 486-2100, you can email all 25 of us, county legislators, at duchessny.gov. Another couple things, the Poughkeepsie Journal has done many editorials over the last decade for well testing, you know, so when properties change hands, the water's not poisoned, or at least people know, the buyer knows that the water's poisoned, and that is back on the agenda for this Thursday at 4:45. I spoke with somebody at Smith Labs recently on Route 9, MTBE is still being found all over the county. This is nine years after the stuff was being banned from being put into our gasoline, methyl tertiary butyl ether, nasty carcinogenic toxic additive. You see 99G, the Getty Station, you know, tanks dug up again. Well, six months after MTBE was banned, the Dutchess County Health Department itself found MTBE contamination. It's nasty stuff. Rockland, Westchester Counties, they have this law under Republican county executives, one-third of the time they're finding contamination. I talked to real estate brokers, they say that about half the time, the water's found to be contaminated. When tests are done, tests are not always done. So if you care about that, please come. Also, Drayton Grant recently passed away. One of the issues she was pushing me hard on for years was neighbor notification for pesticide application. Just 48 hours' notice before pesticides are gonna be sprayed within 150 feet. Not talking about banning pesticides, which plenty of places have done in Canada, this is just 48 hours' notice before pesticides are sprayed. You know, make sure the laundry's brought in, the toys, the kids are protected, the pets. You could spend about seven and a half years looking at all the research documenting the links between pesticides and cancer. So if you care about any of that stuff, come out, speak up, whatever your mind is, this coming Thursday, 4:45, 6th floor of the county office building. Dr. David, last night was the Democratic Legislature Caucus, also the Republican Caucus. Dr. David Conklin, the president of the college, was making his presentations to the two caucuses. He pointed out the same thing he's pointed out for many years, that Dutchess County, the sponsor share, the percentage of community college funding that comes from county government in here in Dutchess is at the bottom of the barrel compared to you look at other counties in the Hudson Valley. That's just a simple fact, and he was pretty emphatic about that when he shared that with us. The last thing I'll say is, well, real quickly, today's Poughkeepsie Journal has a letter to the editor from Dr. Kenneth Leegner from Pauling. This whole thing about the Lyme debate, unfortunately, nobody in the media reported it four years ago, hardly anybody reported it. I got a resolution passed almost unanimously, even the Republicans agreed, chronic Lyme disease is real, health insurance needs to cover it. It's still an issue, I think that the Dutchess County Health Commissioner and anybody who's on the Dutchess County Board of Health really needs to take this issue seriously and not play games with the CDC and the Infectious Diseases Society of America, so that stuff is on the agenda. We should be approving yes or no for the Health Commissioner, that's not on the agenda this month, I don't know why. There's something going on with the Board of Health related to this issue. Last but not least, the form flyer that I handed out, you're all welcome to come join me, Wednesday, July 24th at 6 o'clock, Reinbeck Town Hall, just across the way, and I've been doing a lot of research in a lot of years, trying to point out how much we could save tax dollars and actually create jobs. I don't know if I reported this to you at last month's meeting, I actually got another resolution passed unanimously for Dutchess County to follow the SolarizeMadison.com example. Madison County, Genesee County, Tompkins County, it's basically a 25% discount on solar installation for municipalities, homeowners and businesses, if the county planning department pursues it. We passed the resolution unanimously, my idea, hopefully the county planning department's gonna purchase it. Anyway, you guys have been very patient, I have to run to the Clinton Town Board Meeting, which started about 10 minutes ago. I'm at 876-2488, willing to talk about all these issues, again, Wednesday, July 24th, 6 o'clock, Reinbeck Town Hall. Happy, happy summer.
Thanks Joel. Okay, department reports, wastewater. Grant's not here. Wastewater treated was 3.87 million gallons, gallons of sludge processed, 46,700 gallons, pounds of sludge processed, 5,483 cubic yards of sludge processed, 25.2 MNO sanitation hall, 28,500 gallons of sludge, and the reason for that, of course, is because of the new sludge press installation. Ferrochloride used 126 gallons, lime used 700 pounds. In relation to the sludge press, it is supposed to be tested, they were gonna test it sometime today, so the test shouldn't be completed here this week, and we should be up and running. Glad to see that come to a successful conclusion. Any questions? Okay. Water Department, Heinz.
We had net treated water this month of June of 13,379,000 gallons. We also finished the water plant emergency recovery plan, and thanks to Lisa here, who did a human's job getting it done at night, we had to reformat the thing and completely rewrite it in many ways. The water plant is ready for painting, for the paint group, it's gonna show up somewhere in early part, first week in August. As far as the distribution system is concerned, we replaced an aging fire hydrant and a valve on Route 308, had to take two tries to do that. But before we do any more hydrants in the future, we have to do quite a number of valves to upgrade. We did two today on South Street and Route 9, and we have to do additional ones up on Route 9 and Platt Avenue. Lot of these valves compromised, they either don't turn on or don't turn off. I did some research in terms of our distribution system here, and found that the earliest part of it was started in 1897, between 1897 and 1899, and I will make a map of this, I have a map of it already, but I will consult with some former village officials to look for the extent of this system, and then wanna go out and test it. What we dug up today was some pipes, 4-inch and 6-inch pipes, which looked tuberculated quite a, quite a bit, and I expected the others are as well. I requested and received a hydrant flow testing, the work plan from our village engineer, and will use that in the next few months to get started on that, but I wanted first also map the old system out, and then, what I plan to do here is to test pressure and residual, residual pressure and flow rates of some of the old systems. I sent a letter of intent to the Hazard Mitigation Grant Program, which is run by the New York State Office of Emergency Management, to get hopefully reimbursed for some of the 180K that we spent on relocating the South Parsonage, what is main pipe that was compromised through Irene. I have done some additional work on electric power reduction initiatives, and what I, first I want to tell you what happened on the, on our solar panels here, I have some, I have some copies to give you. Essentially what we have on our solar systems, we have two, two data loggers on there. The first data logger is called, is supplied by N-Face, and what that, what that logger does, it actually looks at the status of the system, and it's essentially a diagnostic tool to locate failures and so on, and it provides also a rough estimate of the amount of power that the system has generated, it's off, it's about 5, 95% accurate or so. The second system is a locos system, which is much more accurate, and that actually reports the power produced and the power consumed, and if you look at this, what they give you here, you can see, the first page is a daily printout of the amount of power produced and power consumed of the village hall here. The next, the next page is a, is a monthly summary going back from 6/20 when I repaired the system, to 6/31, and it shows for that part, it shows that we generated 1,000 kilowatt hours, 1,100 kilowatt hours, and consumed about 1,600 kilowatt hours. The third one here is the total dollars saved during that time period, after we fixed, after the system got, got brought back on board, and it looked like we saved about, say, $190 in the period of 6/20 to 6/30. What I want to do is, give you for the next two months, just a monthly update of what the system does, and then I wanna do it quarterly if that, if that's what you want, want done, otherwise I, okay?
Good job.
So, that's one thing.
Thank you.
Welcome. Oh yes, and from December 2011 till today, we saved about 7,100, 7,300 dollars on that system. And that's based on 16 kilo-
About a year and a half.
Year and a half, yeah, year and a half. Of course December was virtually nothing, January, low production month, but we saved about 7,300 dollars and, and, yeah, that was, oh yeah, based on 16 cents a kilowatt hour. Now, the 16 cents is not something that is constant, you know, it changes. I just, I went to the website from Central Hudson and looked at what their two-year average was, and two-year average was 16 cents. Okay? While I was working on this solar data reporting system with a fellow from Nino Electric, name was, is Chris Phone, I said, you know, I found out that NiSERTA gives grants for larger installations, anything over 500 kilowatt hours, and he and I sat down and looked at our maps and said, where is, where are the potentials in the, in the village additional to what we have up here? It turns out that there's not too much funding available for smaller system, the one that NiSERTA is funding is one for 500 kilowatt hours, which would work very well for the water plant. The problem here is that we don't have enough land to build such a system. We figured out that we need about six to seven acres to put solar panels up there to drive, to drive the water plant, okay? So that, that's a, that's a no-go. We looked at the garage again, and that would work because there's a lot of land there, the problem there is that we would have to put it on the other side of the creek and have to follow, have to cross the power cable over the creek, but also it's in a flood plain. I mean, if you remember during the last storm, we were, had water almost up into the roof. Other places I looked at was the police department here, and I said, man, that's a beautiful roof and so on, except when I took a picture, I saw all these trees out there, and the trees are right in the south of the-
The side that we wanna use.
So, so that wasn't doing any good, and the same thing with the wastewater plant, there's no, no land at all, so, so we gave, we gave essentially up on this, and so there's nothing to do. I have a request from, from Tom Wallbank to our senior water operator, to give Justin Trabnik a out-of-title pay for three days, starting July 1st, and I guess I have to make a motion to-
July 1st or August 1st?
No, July 11th, I'm sorry, July 11th, and the following three days, three days. So I have to make a motion, I guess, to, to bestow a out-of-title pay to Justin Trabnik for three days, starting July 11th.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Are you familiar with what we're talking about?
Or less.
It's part of the union contract.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, so voted.
I have one more item here Jim, and that has to, we may not wanna do that here, but a discussion on credit cards. We have in the water department, one or two customers to, that have used credit cards in the past, that maybe once in a year, and when another customer came in and wanted to have a payback credit card, the company wouldn't accept them, didn't know what was the credit card problem, it was us, it turned out to be us because we hadn't used it for so many years, and so they just shut us down. I had philosophical problems with that, but that is not the business for, for this discussion over here, to have credit cards in the, in this kind of environment here. But there are different areas here, and I think what I wanted to talk to you about is to have really a, what we do wanna do as a village in terms of credit card, we have the water department, that people pay by credit cards, we have mulch, you, people could pay by credit, that which probably would be a good thing. Planning and zoning uses, has a lot of, I don't think they use credit cards, but they-
George, if you're in favor of setting up the credit card system, just make a motion to that effect.
Well, but I, I wanted to have it on a broader, on a broader basis, on the village grid, not just for the water department.
We could do that. Right now, we're talking about the water and sewer bills, if that's-
Yes.
If you want people to have that ability, just to make a, make a motion to that effect, and then we can look at the other options for payment for other departments, we have to set that up.
Or taxes for that.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so I wanna make a motion that we, I was first against it, before I became for it.
Until you found out how it actually worked.
Well, no, no, well, it does-
Just make the motion.
Let me make, yeah, we can discuss it, and then, I wanna make a motion to accept the credit card payments for, for the water department.
Second.
Any discussion there?
Do we pay a fee?
Well, okay, yeah, well, the concern I had were many fold, first of all, there's a fee attached to it, I think it's like 2.5% before, that gets-
We don't pay.
We don't pay that, that gets right on the, on the, on the person who charges, to get, get charged for that right away. The good part is that within two or three days, the money is in the, in our account, okay? The bad part is, in my mind, is we collect the money for late fees and so on, and we would, we'd lose that ability. Now, we have, we are not at risk here at all because-
Oh wait a minute.
Yes.
Why is it a problem if we're paid on time?
That is another problem, that is wonderful. The problem is that-
So what's the problem with the late fee?
Because there's a lot of people who pay late.
Right, but if people pay on time, that's what we want.
That's what we-
We don't want them to pay late, even if we get a late fee, because we're still waiting for our money, we've provided a service that we've already paid for.
Right, but eventually we recoup all that money for, for late fees, and if people don't pay at all-
Having been in my own business for 25 years, I would much rather somebody pay their bill on time than me have to collect a late fee.
Okay.
Okay?
So, so that, so that is, that was, as far as I was concerned, was the downside. Additionally, you know, I, credit cards are slippery slope, everybody's doing it these days, so, that's my-
Okay, so we have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Wait, 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 are we, is this to accept credit card payments for everything?
Yes, no.
No, 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 just the water insurance.
Water insurance right now.
Oh.
We're gonna, we're gonna reactivate it. We had it, it was deactivated for lack of usage, we're gonna reactivate it.
And Jim has, I have to form you and Jim has to sign it.
Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, so voted. Is that it, Heinz?
That is it for me.
Okay. Fire Department.
All right, call report for June for EMS, we had 22 in the town, 25 in the village, for a total of 47. Fire calls, 17 in the town, eight in the village, for a total of 25. Motor vehicle, five in the town, zero in the village, leaving a total of five. Total June calls, 44 in the town, 33 in the village, and 77 overall. Year-to-date is 247 for the town, 232 for the village, and 478 grand total. There are no new firefighters this month. The dryer that was approved for purchase should be installed this week or next week. The last, well, the next thing on here is the washer, they're looking at a washer to wash the gear that goes along, would go along with the dryer that's already been purchased. I left a quote there from Gouche. We did look at the state bid, John Gay did most of the work on that, and I met with him and the chief on it. The state contract is a hard-mount machine, which has to be bolted to the floor, and it has to have a floor drain, a gravity drain on it. The base price for that is 2208, which, that's all that's quoted in the state bid, and then on top of that, they got another quote that included some of the additionals, requiring the base for it to be mounted on, installation brings a total up to about 3,300, and on top of that, that doesn't include the plumbing or the electric, which would, they would need to chisel out and put in a floor drain to tie into the current floor drain, specific for the washer, and it would also need to have 220 service, which isn't currently in place. Also doesn't include a soap dispenser, which I guess would control the, control the usage and make sure they have the appropriate mount. Which brings us to the quote here from Gouche, which is the 20-pound, and this is a soft mount, which is more similar to what we have in a house, you know, with the cushioning on it, can sit anywhere, and it's got the pump, so it pumps out into the slop sink that they already have there. It runs on 110, which is available currently, so this would kinda be, put it in place-
Sealed transmission.
Yeah, put it in place, ready to go on day one with no additional cost involved, but does, the cost comes out to be about, you know, just under $1,000 more than the state bid, but it eliminates that, the cost of onsite modifications. So, I would like to make a motion to move forward with the quote that you have here in front of you for $4,325 for the turnout gear washer.
Is there a second?
A second.
Discussion?
Yeah, you said you have to hook into a drain?
The, this one, the soft mount will have, you know how a regular household washer has the hose that comes out of the back, and it's a pump that feeds it?
Right.
That, this one will have that, so it can just dump into the existing slop sink.
Oh, okay, so you don't have to dig up the floor?
No, this is kinda ready-to-go price, whereas the other one, you'd need to buy a kit to mount it on top of the floor, and then install a floor drain that would sit underneath of it. Because the floor drain now is, what, four feet off the wall or something, and you'd want the machine up against the wall.
What they would have to do is cut a hole in the concrete-
Yeah.
And then run plumbing from the back of the washer, that would come out to the existing floor drain.
Right.
So you'd have a piece of plumbing coming out onto the floor in front of the machine, which, you know, can create a trip hazard.
Right, but now with this one, you don't have to do that?
No.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's less extra cost on this one.
Yeah, right. Okay, that's it.
Any more discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post, so voted. You wanna do the insurance now, Heath, or you wanna do that under other business?
We can wait to other business. I did have one other question though, they were asking about, with the installation of the washer, it's gonna displace some of the stuff that's in there for storage, and they were requiring about usage of the, the outbuilding there, that the police are currently moving things out of into the basement?
What do they, what do they look in the store, I mean?
I don't have an inventory of-
If it can go in that building, it can't be very important, you know, just try to get a feel for them, what they wanna put in there.
Okay.
And what building is that again?
One of the cell tower buildings, that the police were using, and the police have vacated.
They were in the process over the weekend of vacating, so.
Yeah, I would just find out what they wanna put in there.
Okay.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay. Street Department, Howie?
Yes, two hazardous trees were removed, one on South Street and the other one on Astor Drive. These trees were not recommended by the Tree Commission last month, but they came up as being hazardous trees. The, Mike, Mike noticed them, and I think he went to see the one on Astor Drive, right Jim? The one where one limb fell off, and the tree was in danger of falling over Astor Drive, and possibly taking out the electric for the sewer department. So that one was removed, and so was the one on South Street, right over here in the corner.
Waste water.
Waste water department, sorry.
Anthony's gonna be mad at you, Steve.
Maybe he wants notice. Anyway, we're trying to protect Anthony's wastewater department. And then the other tree was over here in the corner of South and Route 9, I actually took a picture of that, if anybody wants to see it, the bottom part of the-
You saw it?
Yeah. Was all rotted out, in danger of falling.
Which one was that?
Right here in the corner of South Street and Route 9.
Oh, the one that broke on Memorial Day weekend?
No, no, another one on the other side here.
That would've broken up the next one.
It's north of that a little bit.
Yeah, it was on the same person's property.
Yep.
Hollowed out.
Yeah. Okay, and also the one that was approved by the Tree Commission on Mulberry Street, I believe that was 38, Mulberry?
Yep.
That was taken down also.
Dr. Versini's house.
Mm-hmm. Okay, the firehouse doors should be installed in the next few weeks, that's the, we're replacing the back doors here on the fire department, they're old wooden doors down there, we're installing new insulated doors, and John Ramondo from the Highway Department has been working on painting these door frames out here in the front and in the back. Heavy downpours has shown us that some of the drain lines can't handle the amount of water that comes with some of these storms, and one happened yesterday. West Market, West Chestnut and Chestnut Street flooded from rain volume. And a few weeks ago, we opened the gate valves to lower the water level on Crystal, Crystal Lake due to avoid the flooding, and that worked very well, Jim, that was one of our major, first time we really tested that.
Well, I wouldn't say it's the first time we tested it, last year we had to open them and drain the lengths, lake significantly, but we never got any rain.
Yeah.
This time, we got the rain.
And this time-
But the water didn't back up.
Yeah.
You know, it, by opening the valves, it never, it never drained below the spillway, but it never went over the sidewalls at the spillway either, so.
Howie, on that intersection of West Chestnut Street and Rooki's?
Yes.
That particular pipe, that goes directly into the, into the main on the Route 9, I have a sense that this thing is either not clean or it's too small.
It's too small.
Too small, so, you know, that is not probably a big deal to fix that, for the, for the Highway Department, they want to have to cut maybe 30 or 40 feet.
Problem is, the main on Route 9 is too small. We can't get the water away quick enough.
Yeah, but, but that wasn't, that was actually working, that Route 9 was not the problem, where the water collected was right on, on West Chestnut.
Right, because it can't drain off onto Route 9. Because it can't drain off onto Route 9 because of the volume of water going on Route 9.
So, but, but I think it's, it's a problem with the pipe, the size of the pipe from, from West Chestnut to Route 9.
What's happening, Hines, is the volume of water cannot be taken away quick enough, so it backs up into Chestnut Street.
West Chestnut and Chestnut Street both got flooded.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
And what we have is too small a diameter pipe on Route 9 taking the water away, so it backs up into those areas.
Because I didn't...
Increasing the size of the pipe on Chestnut or West Chestnut isn't gonna help the problem any.
No, but, but in previous situations, I thought we had, we had actually the water collecting on Route 9 into the pipes, and it wouldn't go, but this didn't happen this time.
Well, we cleaned Route 9 out last year, which has helped some. But when we get those high-volume downpours like we had last night, where we had one earlier this spring, Heath and I were out...
We had, we had one two weeks ago.
The Fire Commissioners. You know, when we have those types of storm events, our drainage system is just inadequate to get the water away quick enough.
But the one thing I noticed, Hines, was down by the Village Green, there's a storm drain there.
Yeah.
That was not clogged up.
That's right.
Everything in the back was.
Yeah.
Everything in the back, back of there.
Everything back of that was, was all flooded.
Well, the drain, the fact that the drain's not plugged up is a good indication that the drain is working. But the problem is, is that the pipe underneath the road is not big enough to handle the volume of, you know, you have, we know how the drainage system works. It goes from West Chestnut and Chestnut Street and feeds to Route 9, and it goes up Route 9, and all the way along Route 9 are more catch basins dumping water into this thing, all right? So, once the pipe is full of water, it's not gonna take any more water, so it's gonna back up to the farthest point away.
Yeah, but why aren't the storm drains in Village Green and going on to Locust Road?
Because it's downstream from it.
They're not, they're not backed up?
They were not backed up.
It's downstream.
Could there be a clog between that one and the one before it?
Which way does it flow?
Well, the only way to know if there's a clog is to put a camera in there.
Yeah.
You know? But, my belief is that we just, for those, those significant storm events, we have an inadequate drainage system, period. Unless we enlarge it, there's nothing we can do about it. And that's why we're looking at West Market Street, putting bigger catch basins and bigger pipes in.
Well, there, in that particular area, when we had a heavy rain about two weeks ago, there were sheets of water flowing down Oak Street, you know, going right into the, into West Market Street. It was awful.
Was that clogged?
No, it wasn't clogged.
I didn't think it was.
It didn't, it didn't flood.
It's just not big enough to take the water away. That's the problem we have.
But that one wasn't, even yesterday wasn't backed up.
The drainage system we have is not designed for the amount of water we're shedding to it now. It was designed 70 or 80 years ago, whenever it was put in the ground.
Yeah.
We didn't have a number of buildings or houses or blacktop, you know, there was more ground to absorb the water.
Where does it terminate? Where's it dumped out?
Goes all the way up behind Bob Fennell's house, and then cut, makes a corner, makes a cut in behind Steve Melly's house, and dumps out behind, down by the Woods condominiums, yeah.
Yeah, before you get there, before you get to this.
I know what you mean.
So, okay.
Mulch, we're all sold out of mulch. We're planning on grinding the, the brush that we have down there now. And Mike got a quote for $7,500 to grind up the, the stuff we have down there. So I have to make a motion for that, to approve that.
You want to grind the mulch? Make the motion.
I make a motion that we grind the, that's not the mulch, it's the trees and the...
Grind the brush?
The brush, grind the brush to make the mulch for $7,500. I know last year it was $10,000.
Second.
We got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Why is the air conditioner not on?
You won't be able to hear us on TV.
It's hot in here.
Okay. Equipment two-wheel drive backhoe was repaired twice this month. The garbage truck broke down, so we had to send it out for repair. And in Blacktop, they have been cutting out the bad spots in the roads and fixing the road base and resurfacing. That's it for Mike's report.
You were talking about the Tree Commission before. Are you done with that? Because there was...
No, we didn't do Tree Commission yet.
I'm sorry?
Tree Commission isn't done until later. That's under committee reports.
Jim, did you want to talk about the Big Bellies?
Yes. We had authorized the, Tom Maddox put together the package for us for repaving South Parson Street, which he has completed. So now what we have to do is authorize going out to bid. He had submitted here an invitation to bid, which is gonna be put in the paper. But what my suggestion is, we're gonna need to fine-tune this a little bit, because it's awful big. It's gonna cost a lot of money. It's got too much information in it. I think what we need to do is shorten it, just so that it says that we're gonna advertise for resurfacing of South Parson Street, and that interested parties may pick up the bid package at Village Hall, and leave it at that. Because the last time we did one, what was the one we did last week, Lisa? Oh, we did the thing for... For job posting.
Yeah, the waste one.
It went from $300 to $1,000, depending upon the size of it.
Really?
So, yeah, you need to, when you do these, you have to make them as short as possible, because you end up paying by the line. Right?
Yes.
Isn't that how it worked? So I'll talk to Tom about this tomorrow. But what I would like to do is make a motion to authorize going out to bid for South Parson Street. Second? Any discussion?
Tom who? Tom?
Tom Maddox.
Maddox.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. And just so everybody's aware, it's going to be sent out to bid in Phase 1 and Phase 2. Phase 1 would be 1,500 feet, starting at East Market Street and going south. And then Phase 2 would be from that point where that ended, going the rest of the way south to Mill Street. The Big Belly. We have permission from the post office, from the postmaster, to place one on post office property where that alleyway is between the Beakman arms. And, you know, I had gotten the survey, so we could verify where the property line is, and we can locate it on the post office property. So the question here is, I'll make a motion that we authorize the purchase of another Big Belly. I need a second.
Second.
All right, discussion? We don't have, we didn't budget for that in this year's budget, correct? But what we had on the last two years or three years, we had budgeted for two. We only bought one per year.
Right.
Right, and we put three in, right? Yeah, we've put three in.
Yeah.
So there was money that was budgeted in the past that never got spent.
So that's in the, sitting in the fund balance now?
So it's sitting in the fund balance now. So that's where the money would come from.
And the money is how much, six, six?
About $6,000. And then we have to install it. But over there is not a major problem, because there's blacktop there.
Yeah, but the Highway Department does that, right?
Yeah. Yep.
The location is out by the sidewalk, or where?
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, you know how the, there's those wooden posts with the chain on it? It would be right inside that, close to the sidewalk. Perfect location, has exposure to the south and southeast for the sun. It's away from the street, so, you know, a vehicle can't back into it, so it's a perfect location.
It's sitting under trees there, right?
Yeah. It's in the sun. I make sure of that before I make a suggestion.
Well, it probably doesn't matter, because it needs daylight. That's probably sufficient.
Well, you can, you don't want to put one underneath a tree, where it's gonna be shaded all the time.
I just have a sense that there are trees along there.
Well, there's trees out along the street, but this is back from the street, and that whole lawn space is open, you know? So it'll function. So I have a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye, opposed? So voted. All right. That's it, Howie, for Street Department?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we're not gonna...
We're not gonna talk about it yet. Planning and zoning. I have on here a resolution for sidewalks on Montgomery Street as part of the site plan approval for Northern Duchess Hospital expansion. There was a public hearing about the hospital last week. Hines was there, I was there, Heath was there. Howie came up after his Tree Commission meeting. And basically, I had polled all you guys, of course, previously, asking what your feelings were about a sidewalk on the north side of Montgomery Street on the hospital campus. And I feel it's important, due to our vision and our idea of making the village as pedestrian-friendly as possible, that that campus be fully connected, so that people don't have to cross the street more than one time or in a dangerous location, and that every one of those hospital properties has access with a sidewalk. So, the planning board, when I brought this up, there was discussion, and there was a little back and forth between myself and the landscape architect. And the planning board wanted to know, John Clark asked the question if I was speaking myself or if I was speaking on behalf of the board, and I expressed to him that I had polled you guys, and that the majority of the board was in favor of the sidewalk connection. And I said, if you would like a resolution, I certainly will ask the board for a resolution, and he said that would be helpful. So I am going to make a motion that we submit a resolution in favor of this sidewalk being installed as part of the site plan for Northern Duchess Hospitals expansion.
I second that, Mark.
Hines has got a second. Any discussion?
We're gonna specify it goes all the way to the end of the property by the farmhouse and everything, okay? So make sure it's all in there.
I think it's important, because if you're gonna have the sidewalk in front on Route 9, you can't just have that sidewalk end right there, because you can't cross the street there safely. So it has to come down and go to the, I know people want to go past that, but there is a walkway there.
As I explained to them, you know, we have people that may come from the woods, Wells Manor, Village Green, and they want, they want to just go visit a friend at the Thompson house, all right? So basically, they have to cross, in the crosswalk to Montgomery Street now, which is gonna stay there, and walk through a parking lot, which they admitted in their site plan presentation to us that all their heavy delivery trucks use that road and go down through that parking lot. So it's just not a good situation, so I think that, I expressed to them, I think it's bad planning and shortsighted to not put this sidewalk in. And again, the other thing I mentioned, what happens in the wintertime?
Yeah.
Now you've got snow piled up on both sides of the road. You have Montgomery Street. If somebody walks past the Baptist home and goes down towards Hogs Bridge, and then they want to cross over the street, not in the crosswalk, they have to climb over a snowbank, or they have to go out of a driveway entrance to another driveway entrance. So it's just, to me, it needs to be there.
And they previously agreed to do the Route 9 section that...
Correct, and they previously agreed because the planning board asked them.
Okay.
And I had asked the planning board to ask them for the Montgomery Street one, but they did not.
I was just wondering if we should include that in the resolution, that it just includes from one end of their property all the way to the other?
It's already in the drawings for Route 9.
All right.
Okay, got a motion and a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So voted. Police in court. I am going to, we, we are in process of hiring a new officer. Pete had interviewed a fellow, Chris Cuddyback, a young gentleman, great resume. He works for the Millerton Police Department on a part-time basis now, and he's looking for more work. So I met with him and talked with him, a very nice young man. So I'm gonna make a motion to appoint Chris Cuddyback as an officer for the Rhinebeck Police Department, and that's in conjunction with Pete Dunn's recommendation as the officer in charge. Is there a second?
A second.
Any discussion?
You interviewed him?
Mm-hmm. Yep. Yep, I met with him at the station two weeks ago. So it's, as long as we approve it tonight, then Pete just has to go through the formality of getting all the equipment and the uniforms and all of that. Pete went through his normal process he does for any new hire.
We had a vacancy there, or...
Yeah, we, actually, we have two vacancies.
Where does he work again?
He was working for Millerton right now. His father, and actually, his father worked for Sheriff's Office. Pete knows his dad from the Sheriff's Office. So we have a motion and a second? All over?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Okay, the incident report, kind of interesting. You guys are all aware of the press release that I had sent out regarding illegal parking issues? And infringement on the handicap crosswalks and no parking here to corner signs. The month of June, we wrote a total of 98 tickets for infringement. 1202A2B is within 20 feet of a crosswalk, which means they're painted inside the yellow, or they're parked inside the yellow lines. 1202A1D means they're actually parked on the crosswalk in the white stripe area. So if you look at your incident reports, you'll see the codes on the right-hand column, and it'll indicate to you what the violation was for. And then illegal parking is any place where we have a sign that says "here to corner" or "no parking here to driveways," such as the Savings Bank Plaza entrance. So when you see illegal parking, that's what those are. So, like I said, for the month of June, 98 total tickets. Quite obvious we have a problem. I think it's starting to tail off, but nonetheless, we're still pursuing it. Pete has scheduled some officers to continue the enforcement this month, and we'll just see how it plays out over the next couple of months here. Dog report. We got anything, Lisa?
Nope, didn't get one.
Committee reports. Trees, Howie?
Yes, everybody get the...
Oh, wait a minute, we didn't do planning and zoning, did we?
No.
No.
Oh, yeah, we did the resolutions for the sidewalks, but I didn't talk to you about Bob's report.
No.
Rich and I had met with Bob about this issue with the illegal signage. You know, people just, repeated offenders, the same people all the time putting signs out. And now what it's leading to is almost like a, an explosion in people taking advantage of the situation, putting tables and chairs out on the sidewalk. I, over the weekend, was walking on the sidewalk from Route 9 in front of Village Pizza, and there was a table with three chairs there, and one chair was out into the sidewalk. The person had their back facing, and there's a tree well that goes around the tree there, and it left about that much space between this person's chair and the tree well. So clearly, sidewalk accessibility is not what it should be. They're impeding the sidewalk, so... Bob has sent letters to the people that we had issues with. There were a couple of other people that we noted today that need to be sent letters. And Rich had met with myself and Bob, and what our plan is here now, if somebody's a repeat offender, they're gonna be cited, and we're gonna take them to court. We need to get a handle on this, and, you know, I've said it before, that, you know, people will want to come to Rhinebeck because it has a certain character and it looks a certain way. And if we just let this thing run rampant and don't manage it the way it should be managed, we're gonna end up with a different-looking community, and we're gonna only have problems. It's gonna create a problem for a business owner, it's gonna create a problem for a property owner, and it's gonna create a problem from, for the village perspective as far as liability issues. So, we're gonna continue to work on it.
Jim, are we confident that the courts will take these cases?
Yes, I have had a discussion with both of our judges. You know, we had a previous issue with a business owner, and both judges recused themselves from that case based on the fact that they both had a connection to that person. And they had to do what was right by law, was recuse themselves. But they both are willing to take these on. So I've had that discussion with them, because I didn't want to end up in a situation where it was gonna be remanded to another court, and six months was gonna go by, and, you know, nothing was gonna be done, so... Okay? All right, that's it for planning and zoning. Howie, go ahead with the Tree Commission.
Okay, did everybody get the report?
I believe so.
Yep.
Okay, so, first thing I want to do is to appoint a new member. Brian Del Pizzo of 20 West Chestnut Street. He sent this letter in a couple of days after our last meeting, so it was kind of late for last month, so let everybody read this letter. I make a motion that we appoint Brian Del Pizzo as a member of the Village Tree Commission.
Second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? So voted.
Okay. Congratulations, Brian. Okay, the Tree Commission recommends the following actions to the Village Board. It was agreed to recommend the removal of a large maple on Mill Street. This is the one you just asked me about, Jim, across from the Legion, where one part of it had fallen off onto there. So the Tree Commission recommends it taken down.
That's the one that came down Memorial Day weekend?
Right, right. It's also agreed to recommend the removal of a dying tree at 6 South Street. Many wires, a tree will have to be removed professionally. Some of these, we're gonna try to get Central Hudson to take down. There's another one at 44 Oak Street. Now, this one was in question. The commission didn't know if it was in the, in the right of way or not, and I went there today. Lisa told me it's 25 feet from the middle of the road, Oak Street, right? So this tree is about 22 and a half... So, this tree is about twenty-two and a half feet from the middle of the road, so I think it's in the, in the right-of-way. So, therefore, it's our responsibility. This is, um...
Give your micrometer out?
If you want to come with me, we, we can check it tomorrow, but the tree is clearly dead and it's going all the way around the wires, and then, and there's even a, what are those things called in there? Central Hudson?
Wires?
No, not wires. The other, transformer. There's a transformer there. So, maybe we can get Central Hudson to take this one down. There's other trees that people did not put permits in, but that the tree commission has, has recognized as being clearly dead, and even Mike Wolf from the Highway Department has pointed these out. There's one on Catholic Church Plaza, Monsignor Joy Plaza. There's a big dead tree there.
When we say Monsignor Joy Plaza, do we mean a road, or do we mean on church property?
It's on church property, but I believe it's in the right-of-way. We have to determine if it's in the right-of-way.
Is this one on South Street?
Yeah, there's one on South Street, right across the street from this one.
Yeah.
That's clearly in the right-of-way.
All right. We'll have to look at it.
Yeah.
I know Mike, I, Mike and I had looked at one on, on the, in the buffer strip between the road and the sidewalk with dead branches in it.
On South Street?
Yeah, on Monsignor Joy Plaza.
Oh, okay.
All right. But I'm unclear as to where this tree is.
Okay. We'll, we'll look at it. They also recommend removing a dead tree in the mini park on the North Park side and another tree in the mini park, and they believe that the Highway Department can take these down. They're not that big. Also, they recommend taking a dead tree down in front of Twenty-one, Twenty-three Livingston Now, this one, this was not, also not, um, there was not a permit filled out for this one. So, what is our policy with this? If a neighbor notices a dead tree on somebody else's property, there's two of them here and, and that are under this circumstance.
We talked about it last week.
Remove the dead tree in front of Twenty-one, Twenty-three Livingston? That's the one you're talking about?
Yeah. The guy across the street, Jim Edison, was the one who pointed this out.
Well, if it's a dead tree and it's in the right-of-way, it's a safety hazard.
Okay.
You know? And if it's a public safety issue, we don't have to have an endorsement from the property owner.
Right. But should we notify them? Like, these are two, these are two out-of-town people that own these properties. One's in New York City, one's in Hastings on Hudson.
Well, like I said, if it's, if it's a public safety issue, we can just go take the tree down.
Send some letters.
Right.
I mean, certainly, if you want, we can send a letter to them, notify them, we're gonna take the tree down, but it's not like we have to have their permission.
No, I understand. But as a courtesy, should we send them a letter saying, hey, we took this tree down?
Probably be nice to notify them. There's gonna be some work in their area, yeah.
Yeah. So, that's it on all the trees that we need to take down. So, I make a motion that the village board approve taking down these trees?
All right. Budgeting?
Well...
You have a tree removal money in your budget?
Yeah, yeah. I know. And we're gonna be using a lot of it. So, what, do we want to put pressure on Central Hudson and try to get a couple of these down?
What I can tell you from my conversations with Central Hudson is that if it involves primary lines and they're in danger of losing the primary lines, they will do some work. They did that black walnut tree.
Yeah, they took...
Up there on Montgomery Street for us, all right? And they would've taken it all the way to the ground, but I said, well, you know, the black walnut tree, if it's usable, has some value as lumber. So, they cut, cut it down basically below the wires. If it's secondary lines that are just providing service, they're not gonna take the trees down. I can tell you that. So, it, it all depends. We call them, we ask them to come take a look. They might say yes, they might say no. But they say the number of trees that they're asked to take down, and this guy I talked to said he covers eighty different communities in the Hudson Valley, and he says, we don't have the money to be proactive enough to address all of these tree issues. If it involves, involves the primary lines where it's gonna wipe out a whole neighborhood, then they'll come in and do the work. But if it's gonna interrupt one house or two houses or three houses, nah, we'll just come cut the lines off and we'll restore the power. That's how they work.
Yeah, I know. We, we found that out. But this one here has a transformer on it on Forty-four Oak Street.
We have to have a look at it.
Yeah.
And that's just, Mike has to call Pete McFarland at Central Hudson and have him come take a look.
Okay.
I talked, I talked to Pete for about forty-five minutes after our last meeting. Okay?
Yep.
All right. Now, what's this last thing here under other?
Okay, that was a mistake. Lisa had given us the wrong, the wrong address. That's Fifty South Street, but it's fifty-five. So, we didn't know where to, where to look, so...
Cecily's gonna go back and look at it and talk to her.
What, what is it?
She needs to, she needs to replace her water line from the main to her house. But the water line goes straight under a village tree, and she really doesn't want to remove the tree. So, she wants to take the water line and go around the tree, but at the same point, the tree has done damage to the sidewalk. Tom is aware of this.
This needs to get kicked behind some Tom, and then they need to work with the, the person.
Right. Tom's already gone and, and looked at it. I've already talked to her about it. But now their issue is, well, moving the, the water line, but the tree's done damage to the sidewalk, so she wants to know how that works.
Well, it's two separate issues.
Right.
If the water line is gonna be moved, Tommy has to, and Hines have to be involved, and Tommy has to sign off on that. But it's not just a matter of installing a new line. The old line also has to be terminated.
Right.
So, it can't cause a problem later on.
She's talked to Tom about it already.
And then, if there's a sidewalk issue, then that's something the tree commission goes and looks at, looks tree, determines whether the tree stays or goes.
Right. They went to go look at it, but I gave them, the address was incorrect, so they're gonna go back and look at it again just for the sidewalk. Tom's aware.
Fifty-five?
Fifty-five South Street. N-I-E-R-O.
Okay. So, I have a motion. Do we, do we have to go through?
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Discussion. All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So voted.
Thank you.
Website. Anybody got anything?
Nope.
Finance and controls. Have we done anything on this cash policy yet?
No, no, nothing was, no meter, nothing.
All right. I will follow up on that. Okay. Other business. Resolution for notice of claim. Uh, we're gonna give everybody a rundown on this.
The general municipal law has been amended so that now you can file a notice of claim through the Department of State. The Department of State, of course, is going to charge a fee for that, two hundred and fifty dollars. If the municipality adopts a resolution designating the Department of State as an agent to accept service of process, you get one-half of the fee. So, that's the purpose for adopting that resolution and designating the Secretary of State for service of a notice of claim.
So, I have a resolution here to that effect. I'll make a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Everybody?
What's the advantage to?
We're gonna get money.
If a notice of claim is served through the, through the Secretary of State, and you don't adopt the resolution, the state keeps the two hundred and fifty dollars. If you adopt the resolution, you get half of it.
It's not that we're giving up half, we're getting half.
You're getting it.
Okay.
It's a win-win for us.
They're piggybacking on us.
Got it. All right.
So, we got four?
I'll give you the website tomorrow. You just want to log in.
Okay.
Okay. Insurance. Pete?
All right. So, we reviewed?
Are we serving other business yet?
No, not yet.
Yeah. We're on B on the agenda.
I left that out there, the, it's like that. So, we reviewed the insurance policies and starting with the, should be an S there, workers' comp. We're with the New York State Insurance Fund, and under that, we're in Safety Group Four-Nine Seven, which is administered by a broker, and we've been with that since nineteen ninety-six. That group is specific to municipalities, and Bill Dowden from Rhinebeck here is on the executive committee for the group. There are a total of about a hundred safety groups, and there's also additional entities that participate directly with, with the New York State Insurance Fund. Bottom line is, it's a huge group of, of insured. The unique part there is that it is fully insured and backed by the state. So, in order for them to default and it to fall back on the village would have to be, the state would have to default. Part of their package is that they pay dividends, or at least they have for the last thirty years, to the tune of twenty-five percent. And you'll see the numbers for, we have two policies, one for the village and one for the fire. The village policy is strictly based on the payroll that they would have to, you know, take care of, based on a claim. The fire is based on the population that's served. So, you see the two numbers, around eighty and thousand for the village and forty-five for fire. Now, you have to back, this past year, it came in about twenty-five, but it should, or just below twenty-five should come a little higher than that typically. So, the estimated costs, assuming we get another twenty-five percent dividend, will be about ninety-three thousand for this year, which just started on one July. There's a couple alternatives to our current plan, and one is the New York State Municipal's Workers Compensation Alliance. This is a self-insured group, but it insures a large, large group of municipalities, and it seems to be growing, taking some of the business from NISIF. And they guarantee no year-end audits, which translates to, they're not gonna come back and, and tack expenses on to end of year. Your, your quote is what you're gonna pay. Just to note that the town switched to them last year, and as far as I know, they're, they're happy with it. So, that, that for this year would've been seventy-six thousand, so clearly, there's, there's a savings. Another alternative would be the Dutchess County Group, which is just being open to municipalities. They have a handful on there, don't have a quote for them. They're also self-insured, but they're, you know, to note, that's small, very small group of...
That's what Molinari talked about.
Yeah, we went to that seminar, that's what they talked about. And I talked to her just yesterday, Rebecca White again.
When are they gonna come out with some idea of what the cost is gonna be?
Well, I didn't put forth a quote there because we just renewed on July one. And what happens is, it's very cost prohibitive to switch unless you wait until your, your time is up. You pay all kinds of penalties to get out of your current policy. So, and it's based on time, you know? If you switch a month before, it's not so much. But if you switch eleven and a half months before, you're gonna pay probably to the tune that would make it not worth it to make the change now.
So, we are now with, with item number one, insured?
That's, that's what we have now.
What we're done for this year.
The...
That, that ends when?
June thirtieth of next year.
Next year.
Just started.
And when do we get, when do we get the dividend?
The dividends get paid out, I believe. We won't see the dividend until January, I think it is, for the year that just ended on thirty June.
So...
So, they have to...
Six-month lag.
Yeah, they do all their, over the next few months, they do all their computations and figure out their losses across their...
So, if you were to switch here in next year?
Yeah.
You would still get the dividend six months later from, from this current year?
I'm assuming, yeah, I'm assuming you get the dividend based on the year that you were, you were in. I don't think, yeah, you should.
Yeah.
As far as the county group, we have to provide them with information in order to get a cost estimate because they need to see our payrolls, et cetera, et cetera. Because that's, he set up here in the top part, for the village, the premium that we pay is based on payroll. So, the county group would do the same thing. They would base it on what our payroll was. And see that what happens, what he's talking about with NYMER, with no audit, what happens is the State Insurance Fund every year then asks you to give them your payrolls for the prior year. And then, they audit your payrolls, and as long as you've reported your payrolls accurately, you don't pay any additional money. But if you made a mistake, or if your payroll increased and you were paying a lesser premium than you should've been, then they assess you.
And I'm not sure about the, you know, I had the most lengthy presentation from, from NISIF, but the way they work is they do a three-year look back. So, actually, the village, apparently, five years ago, four or five years ago, had a bad year in terms of comp. So, our rates just went down because we, you know, we dropped a bad year off the back end. So, we've had three good ones, and the others may, you know, probably follow a similar pattern, I would assume. So, that, that gets adjusted.
Yeah. Insurance companies don't like paying out.
So, when are we gonna make a decision?
Next year.
Well, yeah, we're not making a decision on anything now, so the, the recommendation is, you know, we kinda got on this a little late this year. Wasn't really time to, to put forth the change.
Budget process.
Yeah, so it should go in the budget process about ninety days out. We should start looking at it, and that would give us time to, you know, get multiple quotes and bring it here before the board. But just to give you an idea of what we're, what we're looking at. And then, the, the liability, that we currently have through Trident, which is through Ferrelli and Ray Cow. And just to note there that we, they've had claims, we've been with them for two years, and they, you know, we've had some claims with them related to the sidewalk. So, we've seen our, seen our rates go up there. The alternatives to that, that's a much wider market because, you know, workman's comp is based on payroll liability. It's kinda like car insurance. They can change your, you know, deductibles and your coverage amounts a lot. So, your, your premiums can, can change significantly there, but we currently...
And how many tickets you get.
What's that?
And how many tickets you get or faults you have.
Exactly. So, your claim history is, is critical there. The one which kinda started this whole thing was Brian Miles from the Spain Agency. We had that email about NYMER, and that is a liability policy, but we weren't even, they have all the information, but we're not able to get a quote from them yet because we have a pending letter from the DEC regarding the dam, which they've made some recommendations, but until we have a response to that letter, they won't quote us. That one started June first, and the same situation exists where, you know, it's beneficial to wait until the renewal date to switch. Otherwise, you're gonna pay penalties that, that are gonna hurt you in, in the meantime. But that, there's plenty of, you know, you could get a lot of different places could[1638.26] But that, there's plenty of, you know, you could get a lot of different places to quote. The place that does, NISIF, Glotfelter Group, they can also do, give us a quote on, on the liability. And Glotfelter would be, they're associated with the Dowden Agency as well. So, we would need to, same time, you know, it's 30 days apart, so in the budget process next year, we can work on both of those, but in, you know, we should address the extra dam and...
Well, it's nice that you're driving this.
What's that?
It's very nice that you are driving this.
Yeah, try to remember this next February when we...
We'll see, we've got to get through March first.
Yeah.
He doesn't, he doesn't forget anything he remembers, Charlie.
That's right. One add on, on there, is we do, the Fire Department, Inc., has a policy of supplemental accident and disability for the volunteer firefighters, which gives them additional coverage in the event of death or disability. And that's a three-year term there, which is coming up in January. But we pay 25 percent of that premium, which...
We pay 50 percent. We pay half.
Oh.
It's split, we pay half.
Okay, so my number is half what it should be?
Yeah.
Okay, so that, that means we should get half the say, and, you know, we'll request them to get maybe three quotes, so, to make sure that we're getting the best, best price when it moves forward.
Is that it?
That's it, yeah.
So, that one we have to look at in probably October.
Yeah, that one's, that one's coming up in January, and I'll talk to them about...
In the fall.
Because they hold the policy, and we just make a payment on it, so it's going to be up to them to do it.
Well, see, what happened was a few years back when Wayne was liaison, they had a policy, and then they increased it, and we agreed to pay half of that.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Pete, thanks for all your work on this. It's a pretty comprehensive look that you took at everything, and definitely positions us better for next year when we go into the budget process.
Good job. Well, thank you.
More other business?
Yeah, I just have a question here, with this happening.
Oh, get that.
Yeah, no, no, no.
No?
No, it's a question.
What's your question?
Well, my question is, in the water department, we are in need of some updated equipment, and I was informed by Lisa that the town is going for a grant.
The town and the village are in that grant together?
And I haven't heard any updates on that?
It's been submitted.
It's been submitted.
There's no update.
They just submitted, then the...
It had to be, it had to be submitted by the 27th of June.
And what's it new?
And basically, the upgrades for this building would involve seven new computers and printers, et cetera.
Not just for this building, but I think even in the water plant too?
No, just this building.
Okay, so, what, can I go out and buy them for myself?
You need to put a plan together and come to the board with it if you want to do something.
Well, I was waiting, I thought it was part of this year, and you're saying it is not.
No, nothing for, like, the wastewater plant, the physical plants.
Okay.
The wastewater department downstairs and the water department downstairs, yes.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just, it's just the administration.
It's the administration's part of it, yeah. And basically, the way it is, Heinz is, there'd be a fiber optic cable between the two buildings, there'd be a server over at the town hall that would be shared, but it would all be, of course, encrypted, you know? So, the grant has been submitted, and we just have to wait for the review process and notification, whether we get it or not.
Okay.
Is that it?
Yeah.
Correspondence. We have received on June 24th a letter from Rebuilding Together Duchess County, and this is the program that, you know, it's a not-for-profit organization that helps low-income homeowners do home repairs, and there's, the information is here, I'll give it to Lisa, so if there's anybody out there in TV land that is interested in finding out more about Rebuilding Together, they can ask Lisa for the information. We had received some correspondence from a film group that wants to do, they're doing a movie.
I want to be in it.
Excuse me?
I want to be in it.
Contact them. Tell them you want to be an extra.
You're already a grumpus, aren't you?
That's right.
Santa Claus.
All right, so, they've made a request to use some space here in the municipal parking lot, they're talking about 12, 12 spots, and basically, Lisa, it's along this side over here, correct?
Yeah.
You know, this first row when you go in. They want to use it from 2:00 in the afternoon until 12, and then they're going to do some shoots on the street, and what we had suggested to them was that they get the, that they're going to park a vehicle, that they talk to the business owner where they're going to park the vehicle in front of, and make sure they're okay with the fact that they're going to do that, so they had contacted Peter over at Iconic Hair, and Peter said, no problem, and they're making contact with Caserino's for that side, right? Which is Bob Joffe's old barber shop. So, basically, I guess we just need to make a motion here to approve this.
When you start again?
I'm going to make a motion to approve it.
August 7.
Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion?
What kind of movie it is?
I have no idea.
No?
They shoot all the time here.
Oh, they do, okay, oh, that's right.
I think this is the same group that's been down the gardens, isn't it?
Yeah, they've, they've done, last year they were here, the year before they were here, yeah, I think they, are they the ones that just did the vampire thing at the gardens?
I think so.
It was a film crew at the gardens doing the vampire film.
These are, you said when?
All the time.
When?
Vampires.
August.
Are they planning on blocking the parking lot, Foster's parking lot over there? I know they're going to be next to, next door to the barber shop.
No, it's going to be the space in front of the hair salon.
Just there, that's it?
That's what I was told. That's what, that's from their emails, that's what they're saying, Peter's giving them the approval to park in the spot in front of his shop.
Right.
You said August the 2nd?
7th.
7th.
So, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Any other correspondence, Lisa?
That's all I have.
Okay, water and sewer adjustments, what do you got, Hartz?
Well, I was an eager beaver last month, and Lisa sort of stopped me, and because of that, I have nothing to report, except...
Good job, Lisa.
Except good news, we have 12 new accounts during the month of June, and four new taps in the garden.
And the 12 new accounts, this is just like a person buying a house and switching over? There was, actually, speaking of that, there was good news on the radio this morning that there's been an increase in the number of real estate closings, and hopefully, this is going to be a spike in our mortgage tax revenue.
Yeah, yeah.
How many taps?
12? I think four.
Thank you.
So, you don't have any adjustments?
No adjustments, no.
Okay.
Already made.
Next one.
Thank you.
All right.
Next one.
So, vouchers are ready to be approved downstairs, and I need a motion to go to executive session for personnel matters.
Can I go back to one highway question?
Yeah, sure.
The, the bridge down, just downstream of Route 9, south of...
Yes, by the Legion Park.
Yes, just down from Ashford, yeah. Any news on that?
Did you happen to, we, we talked about, there's a railing that was pulled out probably during the hurricane, and kind of safe, there's a big drop-off there.
Well, there's that one brace that isn't attached.
Right, yeah.
I checked the railing, the railing's not loose, the railing's good and solid.
Okay, but is the transition of the railing where it comes down, on both sides, actually, there's just like, kind of big voids that are...
Why don't you and I get together and we'll go down and take a look at it, and you can run it by me what you think.
All right, perfect.
All right.
And I have a question, is that, would that be under the highway department to maintain, I mean, to paint that bridge there, because it's, it's like a state bridge?
No, I don't think so. It's a DOT bridge, as far as the maintenance of the sidewalk part of it, that I think would be our responsibility, but railing, I don't know if that's considered the superstructure of the bridge, or we'd have to find out.
Well, that's been the question, because it's, the actual pedestrian bridge is, there's a space between it and the road, so...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you want to say something about that?
Oh, yeah. I'd like to take a moment. Bob Winnie, who was the village attorney, I completely forgot about that, thanks for reminding me, had passed away, actually, on July 4, and Bob was 89 years old, served as the village attorney for 50 years, was very involved in the community over those years, a great community servant. I know he was a big, big mentor to me when I got involved in village government, taught me a lot, you know, about how to conduct business, and the way you should run meetings and those types of things. I just want to take the opportunity to thank Bob personally for everything he did for me, and I would like to ask everybody to please stand, and I'll offer a moment of silence Thank you. Rest in peace, my friend.
You've got 50 years, Rich. 48. Catch up to him.
He can't even say he's a short timer. Okay, do you, did you have any comments you wanted to make tonight?
I'm Kate Long from 86 Montgomery, and I've been...
Come up to the microphone, please, Kate.
Thank you. I'm Kate Long, I live at 86 Montgomery, and I, as I've mentioned in previous meetings, I'm employed by Reuters, an international news agency, to write about the municipal bond market, so I have a lot of experience in that area. And I've been in communication with Health Quest, David Ping, about the nonprofit status of the hospital, because he had made several references to the fact that, well, we, we were in discussion about for-profit leasing of the hospital space, and he made, well, I've been emailing, and he said that they, in fact, the for-profits that leased space at Northern Duchess were paying property taxes. So, I went through the property rules and discovered that, in fact, none of them were. And so, in responding to him and saying that, he said he would have the CFO of Health Quest and the facilities manager address the issue, so that's where we are. And this is related to the proposed addition, and sort of just generally the tax status of the property, so if you have any other questions?
We certainly appreciate your diligence in this, and certainly are interested to hear what your findings are.
Yes, absolutely, I mean, I've written about it nationally, on the national level and stuff, so it's just sort of a reflection of things that are, you know, going on across the country, about communities questioning the income of properties that are not on their tax rolls, or have an exemption, so...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kate.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I need a motion to go to executive session for personnel matters, please.
I want to make a motion to go to executive session to discuss some personnel matters.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted.
Do you have business?
Yeah. Excuse me?
Come back and do business?
Yes, we shouldn't be too long. We good? I need a motion to resume regular session, please.
I make a motion to resume regular session.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted. Is there any other business anybody wants to discuss? Okay, I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Pete seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? So voted.